...of seven o'clock having arrived, let the council come to order. The, uh, tonight, all the council members are in attendance with the exception of Councilmember Balsanic, a quorum has been established. Tonight, we have an introduction with a new firefighter, paramedic, who is joining our, uh, fire department, and I will recognize our fire chief, Mike Schut, Mike?
(inaudible)
Okay, well, go right ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll turn over to Mike in short order. I just wanted to, um, welcome everybody. I see a number of members of the department here, and I know you have training tonight, so thanks for making it here. Um, we are at, uh, what we'll call a milestone evening tonight for many things on the agenda, but, um, we're gonna be welcoming Cory Ketchmark, our latest and our final full-time firefighter, paramedic, um, to the organization. If you remember, about a year and a half ago, we had seventeen recommendations for our fire department, and, um, staffing was, uh, two of those, and we have, I'm pleased to say, we're at the staffing numbers we wanna be. We just made, um, a conditional job offer for some additional paid-on-call firefighters. So, we are moving along with the operational recommendations as well, and very exciting night tonight, and I know we're excited to have Cory here. I'm gonna turn over to Mike to talk a little bit more about Cory. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie.
Chief, go right ahead.
Thanks. Um, as Melanie alluded to, it was, uh, another extensive hiring process. Uh, I do wanna extend a sincere thanks to Julie for all of her assistance in the process. She put a lot of tireless effort and many hours into it, along with, uh, members of the public, the Public Safety Advisory Commission, uh, members of the Police Department, all and firefighters, all assisted, uh, in one form or another throughout the process. And then, uh, obviously, the background checks were done by the Police Department, which were, uh, quite extensive as well. But, very excited, uh, to welcome Cory Ketchmark, uh, to our organization. Cory, uh, he's very excited to be here. He's originally from Inver Grove Heights and currently lives in the city of Rosemont. Um, he's got six years of, uh, field experience as a paramedic in the field, and also holds a degree in emergency medical services. And he's also a member of the Rosemont Paid-On-Call Fire Department as well. So, um, he's ready to come, uh, work and uphold our values and bring the citizens of Hastings the service they deserve. So, I wanna welcome Cory. Along with Cory tonight is his wife, Trish, and their son, George, who's a year and a half old. And, uh, Cory has asked, as in the past, you know, we do a little, uh, badging with the new badge, uh, or pinning ceremony, and Cory has asked his identical twin brother, Zach, who serves as, as a Minneapolis police officer, to do the honors. So, Zach, I'd like to welcome you to the city of Hastings, if you wanna come up and...
Great. Welcome, Zach. We're glad to have you here tonight. Laurie, would you like to say a few words, and then perhaps we can get a photo with the council? Go right ahead.
Well, I'm very excited to be here, like Mike said. Um, I'm ready to serve the citizens as best I can and work hard, and I'm really happy to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cory. We're very glad to, you know, we had a very rigorous, as you know, process to have you here, and I think that you'll enjoy your stay in Hastings. You'll find that your colleagues on the fire department are one of the best around, and so you're joining a great group of people in a great department, so welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And let's see if we can, council members, we can go in front and get a quick, uh, photo with our new firefighter?[223.62][223.62](coughing)[224.62][224.62](pause) training tonight, so thanks for taking time out of your busy schedule of being here tonight. And you are excused, 'cause I know you have to go back to training, so... Uh, next, council, you'll see on the agenda, we have a, uh, a presentation, uh, quickly, with Avery Hildebrand, who is with the, uh, who's the community coordinator with Conservation Minnesota and the Audubon, Minnesota, for the Hastings area. And Avery, I'll recognize you, and welcome to the great city of Hastings. We're very glad to have you here, and we, uh, look forward to your presentation.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited to be here. I'm Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, first time I've been here, and then, thank you so much for having me again. This is, uh, a great, great city hall. I really like it.[327.72][327.72](laughing) Also, as you said, uh, some of you know me, some of you don't. Uh, I am a community coordinator for the South Metro with Conservation Minnesota and Audubon, Minnesota. And, uh, kinda why I'm doing that, and a little bit about myself, is, uh, I do this because I grew up on the Apple River. Fifteen years of my life growing up on the river, forty-eight acres. Uh, I taught myself how to hunt, how to fish, and certainly became an outdoorsman, and something that I think, uh, we need to cherish and need, have available for our kids and our grandkids, a little bit of why I'm here. Uh, now, a bit about Conservation Minnesota and Audubon. Um, so, Conservation Minnesota, we are a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization on support of a variety of conservation issues here in the state of Minnesota. And our mission is to turn, uh, your love for Minnesota's great outdoors into laws that protect it, uh, and that's certainly what we're doing by providing our members with the tools, uh, and the information necessary to make informed decisions, uh, here in the state about common sense, conservation, uh, legislation, and action here in, in the state. So, a little bit about that, and then, uh, you might be curious why I'm with Audubon as well. Uh, basically, we had a lot of the same goals in terms of water quality and habitat here in Minnesota, uh, and instead of taking different paths and, and fighting for funding, we decided to pool our resources, work together, uh, take the same path to achieve those goals. Uh, and that has resulted in a field team here in Minnesota that consists of me and four other individuals that operate all around Minnesota, uh, engaging cities, communities, and counties on a variety of issues, uh, whether it's the state or, uh, something local. So, uh, a little bit about us and what we do. Um, so, uh, also, a few things I'd just like to, uh, thank you for. I really appreciate, I know we had given, uh, Legacy Destination Award to the city a while back, and just really like to thank you all for, for utilizing those funds. Um, if you're not familiar, the Legacy Amendment, uh, was something that was passed here in Minnesota in two thousand eight, um, provides a series of funds for conservation, water quality, uh, and the arts, and, uh, you've certainly utilized that very well, and we appreciate that. Uh, also, just like to thank you for promoting birding on your website. I saw that. I don't know if any of you are aware, but birding is a forty-eight billion dollar industry here in the United States, and, uh, certainly something that, uh, it's worth promoting in your community.[470.53][470.53](laughing) Um, also, I'd just like to thank you all for being, uh, good river citizens and good stewards of your land here. I know you've done some great things in terms of parks and trails and, uh, working and living with the river. A lot of what we do work on is invasive species, um, so kinda how, some of the things that we do will help benefit Hastings, is we are certainly working towards increasing funding for invasive species research, uh, so certainly working on figuring out how we can stop the invasive carp from moving up the river further, uh, as well as providing funding for parks and trails here, as well as, uh, uh, safeguarding the Legacy Amendment funds, and, uh, also, one thing that we're gonna be taking on this year is increasing score grants, uh, which will basically provide, uh, redirect, uh, money that's been siphoned out of the, uh, solid waste tax, uh, back to its original use, which would be to provo-, um, basically provide incentive and money for counties, uh, to work on the recycling programs. So, it'll help, uh, save a little bit of money there, and certainly, uh, excited about that. Uh, so now, onto the survey, uh, the whole reason I'm here. Um, I've been actually, uh, taking a lot of time presenting the survey, uh, throughout the South Metro area, and, uh, thank you so much for actually giving me the time to present. A lot of this has been done through public comments, so, uh, thank you for that. And, uh, uh, so what we have is, uh, throughout the state, we have sixty thousand members now. Uh, in Dakota County, we have fifty-three hundred, and in Hastings, we have three hundred and thirty-two members, um, and a hundred and fifty-eight of those responded to this survey. This was our energy survey that we conducted throughout the Dakota Electric Service Territory. Uh, we mailed out just under fifty thousand surveys to folks in the area, uh, and those were not our members, I should be clear. And a hundred and fifty-eight of those responders, uh, were Hastings residents, and, uh, I know not a lot of Hastings gets power from Dakota Electric, and that was a really good response from a, a portion of the city, so, uh, we're really proud of that. And, uh, a bit about what we found in the survey, uh, we'll get this up on the screen here. Uh, some of our key findings. Uh, so again, we had, uh, just under four thousand folks complete the survey, uh, which is a response rate of seven percent, which is, uh, four times the typical male response, so very happy about that. And, uh, what we found that was that eighty percent of our responders were very supportive of existing Dakota Electric Cooperative initiatives, uh, such as the Farmington Solar Array that they built last year in two thousand fourteen, uh, as well as some of their initial wind energy projects that were some of the first in the state. Um, and then also, more importantly, what we found was that seventy-two to seventy-eight percent of our responders, uh, were very supportive of seeing Dakota Electric take additional steps in the future, uh, so that they remain leaders of our renewable energy future here in Minnesota. Um, so we'll go into a little bit of the details here, uh, on the questions. I've highlighted a couple. Uh, we certainly don't have to go over all of them, uh, and I believe you all have a copy as well. There's another page here. Here we go. So, I'd like to highlight question two. Dakota Electric and its power supplier, Great River Energy, uh, it's their sole power supplier, built a small solar facility in Farmington through the, two thousand fourteen. Do you support or oppose this action? We had a total support of eighty percent. Um, and I should elaborate on the parentheses, so it's sixty-six percent of people said strongly support, and the rest said support. Uh, so we combined the two together. Uh, and then question four. Working with solar and wind sources located mainly in southern Minnesota, XL Energy is planning to increase its electricity from renewable sources from thirty percent by the end of the year two thousand fifteen to, uh, fifty percent by the year twenty thirty. Do you support or oppose this expansion of renewable energy? Again, eighty percent support, six percent neutral, fourteen percent opposed. Uh, we had already touched base on those, so, uh, change things up a bit. Question five. Dakota Electric's sole electricity power supplier, Great River Energy, plans to reduce its out-of-state coal use by nine percent, from sixty-seven percent today to fifty-eight percent by the year two thousand twenty-nine. Would you support or oppose further reductions in the use of coal to generate electricity? Seventy-two percent support, twelve percent neutral, sixteen percent opposed. On, last but not least, question six. Would you support Dakota Electric requesting that Great River Energy use local renewable energy to replace their older power plants when they are retired? Seventy-seven total percent, uh, percent total support, nine percent neutral, and fourteen percent opposed. It's a great response, uh, we're very excited about it, and, uh, certainly just wanted to have an opportunity to share this with you, uh, since there were, uh, Hastings residents involved, and, uh, certainly does impact the community here and the county. So, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you have. Uh, if I can't answer them, I would certainly, uh, I'll get back to you in the future with an answer, 'cause I will find them.[781.13][781.13](laughing)
And anyone that'd like to speak, uh, or comment or questions? Anyone have comments, questions? Thank you, Mr. Hildebrand. We appreciate your visiting us tonight. I'm glad we have your, uh, name, and we got your, we got your material here. So, if we have any future questions, then we'll be able to get ahold of you.
Please do, please do.
Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, council, uh, the next item is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from November sixteenth, or any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting. Seeing none, they stand approved. Council items to be considered, any additional council items to be considered? Seeing none, we'll go to consent agenda. Council, what's your wish? Councilmember Schultz makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Brooks. That motion is now before the body. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails.[837.11][837.11](applause) Next, we'll go to, uh, awarding contracts and public hearing. We have a public hearing tonight, uh, with our truth in taxation for the two thousand sixteen budget, and I will turn it over to Melanie.
Your Honor and council, thank you very much. Tonight's action before you is to hold a truth in taxation hearing, uh, but before we get to that, I'd like to do a brief presentation, talk a little bit about the two thousand sixteen budget, um, and, and what is before you. So, as you're well aware, the budget process began several months ago, um, as our management team members, um, began to put budget requests together. Our budget team is led by our finance committee, with chaired by Councilmember Schultz and Councilmembers Alangi and Nelson, and then we have our budget staff and management team, um, and our, Lee Stoffler, our communications coordinator, who helps us pull the information together as well. So, budget process by the numbers, we've had six open meetings, we had four finance committee meetings, a city council workshop, a city council hearing, and we've dedicated about forty weeks allocated to the budget process. Um, the preliminary levy was set on September eighth, and it will, remains the same, as you'll see for the final levy, levy, excuse me. You also note that we've held internal meetings, um, with all of our departments, so each of our staff members have a better understanding about our budget and what it entails and how we develop it. So, our budget is a financial plan. It prioritizes, um, limited resources into providing high-quality services, and we've got two primary funds. The enterprise funds, those are utility operations, those are generally intended to be self-supporting, and their revenue pays for current operational costs and future infrastructure repairs. An example is a hydro plant. The hydro plant, um, subsidizes the general fund through transfers into the general fund. Then we have governmental funds, those are our operational project and debt service funds. Those are primarily funded through property taxes, interest, grants, local government aid, and those are our primary funding sources for police, public safety, fire and EMS, parks and recreation services. So, if you look at this chart, it talks about the, all city funds for our, our funding sources, and you'll see that levy is about thirty-seven percent, and charges for thirty, charges for services are about thirty-one percent. This is all of our city funds, this is our enterprise and our governmental funds. So, we've seen a growth in our tax capacity. You can see that between two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen, it did go up. We had a couple of years where it went down. We're happy to see that the growth continues. We're at about a four percent increase from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen, and the finance committee, um, following a number of meetings, recommended a tax levy of, it's twelve million dollars, five hundred and ten dollars, twelve million five-ten. And if we take that out and you look at the levy scenarios that we looked at for two thousand and sixteen, um, that levy amount equates to a three point seven-three percent increase, or a dollar amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I will note that this three point seven-three percent is less than the average proposed property tax levy increase of comparable-sized cities in Dakota County, so the large, the ten large cities that we, um, that we are within Dakota County. So, they're seeing at about a five point oh-five percent, um, proposed levy increase. If we look at our operating expenses by function, you will see that our priorities are, we just talked about it, with public safety is about a third of our budget, that's police and fire operations, significant investment into our public works, public infrastructure, um, investment, and then culture and recreation, our parks and recreation, um, amenities. Uh, you will notice that, in, in addition to the, the public safety, we have seen a significant increase in our fire and EMS, um, costs due to implementing those, um, uh, those study recommendations from the fire department study, but it, as well as the, the expenses that we're seeing, we're also gonna be seeing some increased revenues as we, um, enhance our operations and gain additional re- revenues. So, what's new in two thousand and sixteen? We're gonna be replacing some equipment, so Sunny Acres and Tierney Park, two of our oldest parks, we're replacing those with poured-in-place, poured-in-place surfacing. So, rather than having to replace wood chips every year, our staff will be, will be doing a one-time installation, uh, and that will be, um, a one-term, uh, one-time investment for a long-term benefit. We're going to be, um, replacing some big vehicles, such as a dump truck, police, some police vehicles. Um, we are purchasing some new equipment to increase the effectiveness of our mowing and snow removal operations. Those are some of the priorities that we heard, as far as making the community a livable, accessible, uh, community, is taking, taking pride in the aesthetics of the Hastings community. And then we have some new initiatives. So, the finance committee and the councils supported some inaugural year programming for the Rotary Pavilion for next year, to help provide what we're calling sort of seed money, to help, um, develop that wonderful amenity that will be opening up next year. And then we're going to be starting a new sanitary sewer lining program. In short, we are going back to some sections of our community, year after year after year, cleaning the same sections out, not a glamorous job, but something that needs to be done. Uh, this program will be something that we will, we'll be lining those troublesome spots to help our public works folks not have to be repeating the same locations over and over again. So, a question that could be, where do your tax dollars go? So, here are the monthly costs that we've broken down for a median value home. You can see that it's about twenty-six dollars for public safety, eleven dollars for parks and rec. Total is about ninety's, uh, let me look at my math. Total is about eighty-three dollars, just short of eighty-three dollars a month. Now, that's a nine hundred and ninety-five dollar bill a year. It's a fifty-nine dollar increase over last year. Forty-four dollars of that is due to your increased market value. So, as I talked about, our, that, our taxable value has gone up, our capacity has gone up, that's what that attribute, the value of your property is increasing, so you pay more. And then fifteen of that fifty-nine dollars is attributed to the increase, that three point seven-three percent increase in the overall city levy. So, after tonight, after you have your public hearing, the next steps are going to be on December twenty-first, two weeks from tonight. We will ask that you adopt several resolutions, formally adopting the levy, the budget, and then our HEDRA, HRA, special tax levy. So, we do have some more information out, um, that we'll be putting out on the website. If there are questions, um, any member of the public can certainly talk tonight, or contact me or the finance manager, Rebecca Peterson. Before I turn it over to you, back to you, Mayor, I would like to, I'll say thank you, but I would like to, um, pull up a handout that we will have out.
I think we have some over there as well.
We might have them available. So, what we've prepared was a budget at a glance. Our budget book is several hundred pages, and we know that it's a confusing document, um, lots of nuances with public, uh, budgeting. So, what our staff has put together is a budget at a glance. So, it talks about a little bit of the items that I've covered tonight, where the tax dollars go, how we maintain, um, what our different funds are, some of our pro- process questions, some of the new things that we will be, um, looking to achieve next year, and then just sometime, just some numbers. So, how many officers do we have? Our firefighter, paramedics, some of our equipment, a hundred and ten miles of trails, four hundred and twenty acres of parks, trying to provide some real easy context for the general public to be able to understand what the two thousand and sixteen budget includes. So, with that, Your Honor, I'll turn it back to you, um, to open the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you for that fine presentation, Melanie. Appreciate that. I'm going to open up the public hearing right now. This, tonight is our truth in taxation hearing, and so, is there anyone here who would like to, uh, speak, uh, to the, uh, to the levy or to the city budget? Uh, now's the time to do so. So, we'll open that up to the floor. Okay? Is there anyone here who would like to speak to the, uh, to the budget? Please, sir, come right up to the podium. Well, we need it for the record, so, but we're very glad to have you here.
(inaudible)
Well, that's okay. This is democracy. Uh, please give your name and address, and...
Robert Ladd, one seven nine zero Fallbrook Drive.
Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Well, my only comment is, like, under public safety, there, a third of the budget goes for that, and I know that's law enforcement, and I, myself, have been in law enforcement in life. I'm seventy-four years old. I don't think that we really have to have as large a force as what we really have. I mean, I know on my street alone, there's three police officers that live on Fallbrook Drive. I mean, it's, uh, you need police, but we don't need the magnitude of what we're supplied with, and that's about the only comment that I've got, and the rest of the things for parks and places like that, you know, you're gonna need that, our school board taxes and so forth like that. You gotta put your children through school and educate them, but, um, I just think we're a little bit overstaffed when it comes to our police department.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for your testimony. I'll just, uh, let you know, sir, and you probably, you said you were in law enforcement?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, there's a national study that's done, as you know, that, that they recommend a number of officers per capita to the population of any particular urban area.
Right.
And, uh, for the city of Hastings, I think if, the last time I saw, it was approximately, we would need like thirty-six officers, thirty-six or thirty-seven, to be full-staffed, and we're under thirty. So, uh, some of the, you know, I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate what yours, what you're saying, uh, but sometimes when we look at the figures, uh, when we look at that, that study, that we're actually under, uh, police officers to, to, a, a little bit, uh, as to, uh, officers at a per capita basis. You know, and that's some of the things that we have in our analysis when we, when we take a look at some of these things on our budget.
I know, you know, nobody likes to work for free, and I know they draw an awful good salary, and all the taxpayers have to pay for that, and every time you add one, that's a lot of dollars putting into the taxpayers' burden, so, I think it's probably, I, myself, I believe it's out of hand. I think that we could do with a couple less.
Okay, well, good. Well, we appreciate your feedback and your testimony. Thank you for taking the time out to come down here and do that.
You betcha.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to, uh, speak to the council in regards to the budget? Or tax levy, either one? Okay? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Uh, council, no action is required tonight. That'll be at our next meeting. Uh, next, we'll go to the, uh, public works portion of our meeting under community development. We have tonight a very exciting topic, and that is to authorize a signature purchase and development agreement for Great Rivers Landing. John, can you introduce that? Thank you.
I will go through a great amount of detail on the project we have before us, and I believe that the council is willing to inform you what's going on, but I will go through the action that we're asking for tonight. You may recall at the last meeting on November sixteen, you went through a number of land use approvals to land at Great Rivers Landing, and I'm using the word of Great Rivers Landing now because the term will...
Hudson Building, uh, is, is in the past. We have an exciting new development with Confluence Development, the proposal to sell the building, the four-acre site, a hundred thousand square foot building, to develop something that'll be truly magnificent on the riverfront. Be sixty new apartment units, twenty thousand square foot of retail space. At the last meeting, we set forward the approvals for land use, site plan, plaits, special use permits, et cetera. Uh, and an important part that we've been doing along with that is negotiating the purchase and development agreement, which we're asking for action tonight. The purchase and development agreement sets forward the conditions for approval and sale of the property itself. Uh, you may recall that back in, uh, June, we met with the HEDRA group to go over what we termed a term sheet, which essentially put down the key points and aspects to sale of the property. We took that as our agenda in putting together the purchase and development agreement. We had a lot of good dialogue back and forth with the developers, and we're pleased to be able to bring forward tonight the final purchase and development agreement. Some of the terms related to the sale would include, uh, we will keep the tax revenue, or the tax increment financing revenue generated from the Hudson site to help repay our initial purchase. Uh, we've done the plating and site plan approval. They would construct what we, uh, had approved last week with the apartment units and commercial space, be completed by two thousand and seventeen. Confluence is responsible for the park, trail, utility improvements. Uh, one thing we're very excited about is the establishment of a perpetual public easement that would allow for the public use of the private facilities within the site. So, Confluence will be constructing some enhanced park space within the site, it'll be on their dime, along with some grant funding we've received. Maintenance will be their responsibility, however, the public will have access and use of that facility. Also, within the grant, or within the development agreement, we've also put some language in there about if we are successful on Wednesday with our grant for the parking ramp, that the construction and long-term maintenance of the structure would be the sole responsibility of the developer itself. So, before you and your packet, we do have the purchase and development agreement. Pat Regan, representing Confluence Development, is here tonight as well, and I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, John. Council, this issue is before us. Uh, let's open that up for discussion. Council, what's your wish? Councilmember Alangi? Councilmember Alangi makes a motion to approve the authorization of signature for purchase and development agreement for Great Rivers Landing, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. That motion is now before the body. Is there any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Pat, did you want to take this opportunity to say anything at this time?
Very quickly, Mr. Mayor and counsel, thank you. I'd like to say thanks, and we're very excited to keep the project moving forward, looking forward to having some dirt fly.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we appreciate your commitment to this project, and pass that along to Bill Wyland, too, would you?
Will do.
All right, thank you. Okay, next, counsel, is comments from the audience. Are there any comments from the audience this evening? Okay? Seeing none, announcements, announcements, counsel. Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to brief the council very quickly. Last Wednesday, the Senate's Capital Investment Committee came down to take a tour of our riverfront project, and it was getting a little dark when they got here, and their bus had broken down, but thank you, Mr. Regan, for supplying them with a bus that was, had a transmission that was working, and it was a really new bus, so it was awesome, and it was warm in there. And they had got a look at what we're doing along Main Street and the riverfront, and it was very exciting for them to be here. And thank you to the staff. Unfortunately, because of the transmission, they were behind schedule, so they didn't get to come into City Hall to look at the great project, the great PowerPoint that the staff had put together. But it's okay, because we emailed it, and they're going to take a look at it. But I just wanted you to know that they were very excited to see what we had to offer, and I've had comments in the past five or so days from people who have said they really enjoyed it, and they thought we were doing a great job. So I think it bodes well for our request next session.
Thank you for that update, appreciate that. We'll be working on that coming up. Okay, announcements, councilmember Alangi.
Thank you, Your Honor. I see on my calendar, we have a HEDRA meeting coming this Thursday at 6:30 PM. And on the agenda, gosh, with the great, great, we're at Confluence, John, I don't know if you want to brief us just momentarily on what we might have to discuss with everything else, just looking like it's entering a new phase of HEDRA.
We are, we are. We've got one last phase to get through with on Thursday, though. We're going to have a couple of resolutions related to the refinancing of the bond sale that we're doing for the Hudson Building, take action on that. But as you mentioned, early in 2016, we get to start moving ahead with other projects as we look forward to this project coming to completion.
Exciting stuff. So 6:30, Your Honor, right here in City Hall on Thursday, the 10th.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Balsanek, welcome to the meeting, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I knew it was going to be a terribly long meeting, and that's why I ducked out until just now. I will be attending a Dakota Communications Center Board of Directors meeting this Thursday morning at 8:00 AM.
Thank you for that announcement. Any other announcements, counsel? Okay, seeing none, I have a few. First of all, the Arts Task Force will be meeting on Tuesday, December 8th, tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM. That project seems to be...
7:30.
7:30, okay? Delete 7 and insert 7:30, which probably makes some people happy. So at 7:30 tomorrow morning, the Arts Task Force will be meeting. The Parks and Recreation Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, also tomorrow, December 8th, at 6:00 PM at the Joint Maintenance Facility at 920 West 10th Street. An exciting evening on Wednesday night. Starting at 6:30 at the Hastings, Hastings, excuse me, Christ Family Church across from the depot is the Holiday Train Jamboree, and that's in conjunction with the CP Holiday Train, which will be coming to Hastings from 8, I think at 8:30, they will arrive and have their show. But prior to 8:30, the Christ Family Church is hosting a Holiday Train Jamboree with a lot of fun activities and food, like popcorn and things like that for the kids. And so it's going to be a great event, it's to support Hastings Family Service, and so if you get a chance, get down there early, between 6:30 and probably about maybe 8:15 or so before the train gets here at the jamboree, and then again, the CP Holiday Train will be at our depot in downtown Hastings at approximately 8:30 PM. The Planning Commission will be meeting on Monday, December 14th, at 7:00 PM here at City Hall. The HPC Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, December 15th, at 7:00 PM at City Hall. There will be a special city council meeting on Wednesday, December 16th, at 7:30 AM, and that is to meet to sell the bonds, to reissue the selling of the bonds that HEDRA is going to be talking about on Thursday night. The next city council meeting will be on Monday, December 21st, at 7:00 PM. And of course, we need to end our meeting by giving a nice happy birthday to Julie, who's going to have a birthday on the 19th of December, so happy birthday, Julie. There's no further items before the council tonight, a motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Vaughn makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by councilmember Alangi, a non-debatable motion. All those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, and we are adjourned. Thank you.